All right, I'll answer.
You're welcome to be here today. You're welcome. It's a beautiful day out. It's been a big day for Fairfield County. Get to do a ribbon cutting today.
Couple of orange?
Oh, I didn't. That's last week.
Little thoughts of the new branding?
It's fine, well, yeah, I agree. It's good. I have to do it. I do have a phone. Anyway, welcome everybody. We are starting today with our esteemed county engineer Jeremiah Up. Give us an update.
Yeah.
How do you all your research?
Right. Oh, people probably want to talk, so I can try and run some thing. So anyways, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about some of the stuff going on in county engineers office. Show everybody a little bit about what we do on a day-to-day basis. So this was a good project last year. This is Canal Road. It'd be just east of 36th. Up there, you can, in the background, you can see the little farm there. It's a 37th and Town. So that's the existing bridge. The superstructure underneath of it was getting, it kind of old that was looking, looking like it's gonna be lowgraded due to all the farm equipment. It's bus route. There's a lot of reasons. How about this bridge lowgraded, so? We got funding and had our local match secured, went ahead with the project. This is the demolition going on. The existing bridge. And then we're moving into the construction phase. This is the contract report in the deck. You can see all the rebar and everything that's going into the deck there and form work and whatnot. Pretty interesting process. And there's your finished project. So brand-new bridge with a concrete deck sealed up properly. This bridge ought to last well over a hundred years. A lot of the bridges we're replacing right now are about thirty, thirty-five years old, so it's a lot better for us in the future. This was a great project. This is Pickerton and Refuge Road before we did any work to it. And I know probably everybody in here had driven through that intersection at one time or another and, and it feels good. Well, I mean, it needed turn lanes. It has a bad skew. It just needed stuff all the way around. And also, as far as the corridor goes, none of the lights really worked in sync with each other. They were all singularly set up for their own intersection. We upgraded four intersections in this project. Prior to that, we upgraded all the lights and all the functioning software for traffic signals. And what that did in conjunction with this project was it made the entire corridor work together. And it put the right infrastructure in places where we were. So moving forward, this is in the construction save phase. You can see on the left where we blown out this side of the road to build turn lanes and we're extending that to the left. Here in the middle, you can see where we're extending a box collar that needed to be extended to do that kind of work. And on the right, you can see where they're pouring a new handicap ramp and whatnot, putting those facilities in for the new crosswalks, the new signal. And here's the finished project. Everything is functioning really well. The reports I get back pretty much all the way around the board, part of the corridor moves traffic considerably better than it used to. That's always good to hear. You know, we do this stuff based on data that's on paper, equations, standards and things that are handed to us. There's always a little bit of that, I mean, I hope this works. Back of your head. And you know it's going to, but it's nice to finally see it if it happens soon. This was a great project. Now, but we're not done with Refuge Road. The next step in the process is we managed to get a grant for two and a half, either two or two and a half million dollars from Congress, Balderson's office for the Refuge Road Corridor. And what we're working on right now is the design for the entire corridor as far as like a safe, safe streets. It's gonna have a visual concept to it. It's gonna have traffic calming to it. There's probably gonna be some routeabouts and all of whatnot. And it will work with project we did. It's just another phase of that. But the biggest thing that we're doing in that is we got another grant for 1.2 million dollars to build a multi-use path. And what is it? Five schools in the corridor?
Yes, sir.
Five schools in the corridor. And it's not getting smaller. We all know that. It needs pedestrians. So that is an absolute highest priority for us and looking forward to getting that stuff in there and getting that.
So if I could jump in while you're on Refuge Road, that, you know, I'm on that road every day. Can't tell you how much I appreciate the improvements that it made. It's made a big difference in how people move around in that area and more importantly, how safe it is. I've seen that they've started taking down trees and working on utilities and stuff for the multi-use paths. Do you have a timeline roughly on when that thing will be up and running? Beginning.
I hope that we can start construction on it in 26.
Okay.
It could go to 27. I'm trying to get it done in 26. It's the best honest answer I can.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And then we had talked about, in our conversations about this corridor over the years, the traffic patterns around Pickerton North High School. And I know that we were working with the school administration and trying to fix some of that stuff. Have they made any progress or have we made any progress with them on fixing some of that?
We've, we've had some good conversations. I feel like it's probably time for us to reconvene and take the seriousness of those conversations to another level.
Okay.
So that we, I would like to have a little bit more confidence from the school district that, that we're gonna work together on plan. And if
I can be helpful.
So we're working together. We got a ratchet enough. That's what I'm trying to say.
If I can be helpful on those conversations, please let me know. Thank you.
So when the consultant gets a little bit farther along, then that time's gonna pop up. Some time here in the near future. And this is, this is the project I put in here because this is one we did in-house. So this is an old squaw. We call them squash pipes because they're not totally round. You can see at the bottom there, you can see the hole where it's rusting out, the bottom's going out of it. That's typically where these things fail. And then sometimes, depending on what water's coming, coming through, they, they last for a good while and sometimes they don't. A lot of that has to do with farm runoff, especially animals. And moves around whatnot. That'll, that'll cause a lot of decay and a lot of that color and whatnot, so. We went in and ripped the old one out. You can see we got people parked on both sides of the road here. Got the big excavator. We got a crane that's set in the box. And then guys in the yellow down in there with the hard hats are all my crew down in here working. And you can see this is the head wall we put in. So instead of doing all the form work and vetting all the rebar and casting the place, if there, if we need certain parameters, we can use this type of stuff. And those parameters, it's typically height. That's about as high as we can get one before we have to start the form. It saves us a lot of money. It gives us the ability to do a little bit more work. The biggest point with all this and the biggest reason I wanted to show, but, well, one reason was to show, you know, we, we do this kind of work here in Fairfield County. But the reason we're doing this kind of work in Fairfield County right now is because we got our force accounts raised. And we had a lot of support for that. I know we had support from the CCAO. That's made a huge difference. And what force accounts are, there's basically a limit. A dollar amount limit of work that I can do before I am forced legally to have to bid it out. So right now that limit's a little bit over $200,000. It was $100,000. So it had been $100,000 since I think somewhere around 2003. So funny you notice what inflation's done. So what that blew it down to was there was a lot of work that our office used to do that we could not do anymore because of that one. Getting it raised has opened the door for us to be able to do some of these smaller projects and get that done. What that translates into is there's approximately two to three or large structures like that that are being replaced every year and brought up to speed. So big deal for us.
So Jeremiah, it's kind of interesting. I've never really looked at you. Of course, I've been around a lot of box covers, but I never realized you actually afford a concrete pad that they have to settle on.
Actually, it's not concrete.
Is that how you say it?
Yeah. But we grade it and compact it down to where
Looks like.
It looks like it, yeah, especially the distance there. But it's, it's compacted where, I mean, it's almost 100% compaction, so it doesn't move. And it's graded, you know, spot-on. You know, we're talking, we set these things that sometimes it's low as one and a half, 1%. So that's how accurate that route looks down there. A little bit farther along, pretty much done right there, cleaning everything up. All right. And then this is a project at Wausau Western Road and Hill Road, which is up by the Hill Dahlit-Diley intersection. So there's been a lot of interest in development in that area over the years. And as that interest grew, Rick Zabrack did a really good job of getting with the developers in the area. The property owners created a a development area here that allows us to work with the developers. And it's really, it's a, it's a really good public-private partnership. And at the end of the day, what's going on was support from the commissioner's office. We're gonna realign Wausau Western Road right here. Right now, Wausau Western does this. Everybody knows. Right here's James Pizza. Well, it is building a great big DHL right here, and we got more of them planned here. The trucks don't like things like that very well. You know, I mean, everybody can imagine. So when this started coming to fruition and we were all talking about it, my concern, what I told Britt, is if we don't get involved with these people right off the bat, what's gonna happen is they're gonna build, find out that they can't maneuver that corner very well. And they're gonna be sitting in our office wondering what we're gonna do about them. And that's gonna be on us if they're already there. So we got out in front of things. At the end of the day, again, like I said, the council and commissioners, we're gonna do that realignment to the tune of somewhere in the, in the, in the 10 to 12 million dollar range. And at the end of the day, the development will pay for it. All right. So that's a really good model of what's going on in a lot of the successful areas of the state as far as development and infrastructure. And that's where our TID really comes in, our transportation improvement district really comes in. It's kind of a wheelhouse for, for projects like this where there's a lot of entities involved and creative financing, government rental agreements, things like that. It worked out really well. So it's not built yet. We're finalizing plans right now. Finalizing numbers and looking at what we're gonna do to go to the next step.
Can I ask you a question about it? Pattern that you identified on there is what will be that, I'll just call it the new traffic pattern. Will the existing traffic patterns still be accessible or something being closed or taken away?
So right now, what the plan is, is for this to remain and that to remain, but to be called stack right here. Okay. So these people that have this here on the Hill Road will have to come here. Cross that makes sense?
Yeah, so the ownership of keys.
Yeah.
Right. Are they included?
That process has not been started yet. There's a reason why. Okay. Since there's federal money involved. I have, I, I am not allowed to go negotiate, discuss right-of-way money or anything that is property. I have to do that through a contract with somebody. We've contracted David Gork who does all our other right-of-way stuff than we do. Okay. And he's basically done his appraisals, has everything ready to present to the property owners. He's waiting on us to turn him listed. So unfortunately, I haven't been allowed to make that call to Kings, but that's coming very quickly. I would think so.
They know something's going on up there. I don't know that they know the specifics of it because this is a little bit new compared to what we had looked at in the past. But they know that something's gonna happen up there. We're, we're just, the answer really is to just get to that point. Up to this point, I think. And if, as long as there's still access to this parking lot, it's gonna be fine. Questions for you can call here or you can call me. Okay. Thanks. Well, I mean, we're, you know, there's always a process, but we've got to work with these guys. Yeah, I guess, you know, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I I don't know. I mean, as long as there's still a reasonably official way for people to get in and out of that business, I guess that's what, where it is in the day is how people are. They don't like change, especially when might affect the bottom line, right? Yep. And so the, the counterargument to that is that we're opening up that entire corridor for new business, which is only gonna help this business. And we're not pushing off his driveways. We're just gotta go one way instead of the other way. So it'll be all right. Yeah. I'm not able. It's always just, I, I have a relationship with the owner, not go to Vegas together or anything, but.
Yeah. And what I told you about the federal laws makes about as much sense to you as it does me. I could tell that, but.
Yeah, that's fair. That's fair. That's a whole fun side note there.
Yeah. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you both. So he will have ample time to be able to discuss this business. It's like I said, we're just finishing plans now presented. All that stuff's happening in the near future. So with all that said, I'm sure that that's not gonna be the only property owner that we gotta work with. And we've already worked with quite a few of them that have approached us and discussing the project and whatnot. But those discussions, I've had to eliminate any discussion about right-of-way access costs and all that stuff. It's challenging, to say the least.
Now, I think laws that prevent us from communicating with constituents are just wonderful.
Okay, so, you know, actually a little side note, I'll be done. I had to, I had to take that position with Britt Riggins when we were working on Refuge, you know, and it should. I wasn't allowed to talk to her. Somebody I talk to regularly. Doesn't make any sense, but that's the way it is. So I kind of covered some projects that, you know, a bridge project, roadway project, intersection projects, projects that we do in-house. Really big project that the TID is, is focused on. All this stuff, it takes, it takes a lot of people. It takes the commissioner supporting. Excuse me. Takes the commissioner supporting all of us, the engineers office. Rick Zabrack's doing a great job. He's economic development director. He's putting a lot of this stuff together. It's not just sitting on one person. It's, it's all of us. It's, and everybody's sitting at this table and up here, the people in my office and whatnot. We've got a great team. That's what it takes to do this stuff. I'm all for keeping it going. It's my presentation. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thanks. Before you sit, sit down, I want to make sure we don't have any follow-up questions, Commissioner Levacey?
I don't. I'm always very appreciative, you know, you mentioned Pickerton Road. I drive through there. Not as much as he, but it is amazingly transformed effective area. Just like.
Yep. Good. Keep making it better. Commissioner Davis?
Just sitting here contemplating ways I might break the law here in the near term.
Okay. It's, that's kind of a daily thing, right?
Don't negotiate on price or fee. Fine.
Thank you, Jeremiah. I appreciate your presentation. Appreciate you being here today.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have Bart Hampson, our budget director, and I see Stacy sitting out there. She's moral support. I did suggest to Bart that everybody that's in this room today has sat through at least one, if not forty budget updates, so that he could kind of hit the highlights and not every last detail. Bart, thank you for being here. Fire away.
Don't see any attention to him, Bart. You do you.
I'll try and keep.
You'll be present next year.
Why don't you keep stopping like that?
That's true.
As I said, I'll, I'll get to this quite quickly today. Two kind of highlights overall. What's kind of going on right now with our finances, our revenue and our expenses. There's some timing issues going on with the first quarter. And I'll explain that through my presentation real quickly. More about that here in just a, just a few minutes. All right, so. All right, so as we have in the past, we're gonna go through and talk about the financial analysis of the general fund, where we're at with revenue expenses, our sales tax. We'll touch base on that and we'll talk about the 2020 simple budgets. Moving on to the forecast. This chart represents the forecast for 2025 actuals, January through March and forecast April through December. Reven, revenues currently forecasted at $67.5 million. Again, this is just a forecast. And expenses are being forecasted $69 million. We know we have a lot going on right now and, and projects, and we will be updating those as we know more information here in the near future. So more about that the next quarter. Moving on to the trends. As you can see from this first chart, our timing of our revenue is slightly different in 2025 as our property tax revenue processed in March of this year and the previous year processed in April. So you see some differences there. Different spikes that are happening with that revenue. I've broken down the revenue into two different sections this quarter. There's a current view and an adjusted view. The adjusted view is just trying to give us an idea of what that might have looked like with that property tax in there. And I'll show you that in one of these slides there. Overall, I believe our revenue's on track for this first quarter of 2025, and our expenses continue to show some consistencies year-over-year. As I've discussed earlier, by previous presentation, you'll see a spike there in December. That spike there are things that we're kind of holding towards, towards the end of the year because we're not sure exactly when those expenses are gonna hit. So that'll adjust as the year goes on. Those expenses are used. Moving on to the financial dashboard, we continue to monitor our finances by analyzing the actuals to date. Our estimated forecast to ensure that we are staying within our targets of our financial goals. Our current forecast cash balance shows it's, it's down so far in 2025 based on the product, the property tax timing we've already just talked about. But if I put that, just those adjustments in there, I feel we're relatively flat, a little bit too good, a little bit good on cash right now. We'll know more about that when we get to this next, this next quarter. And those timing issues kind of are resolved by going through the second quarter. Moving on to our first quarter revenue results, and this is where mainly the timing issues are. We've talked about this before. We have about 120 separate line items that make up the revenue line items along with 10 different categories. And these are the categories associated with those items. These next three slides represent the current revenue value or view, which matches our financial data systems. So this has the data in there without the adjustment in there. The current revenue shows an increase of $9.8 million in 2025 for the first quarter versus the 2024. But mainly, again, this is just the result of the property tax timing that will resolve in the next quarter. As far as our, our category, which broken down by percentages here.
Could you back up one slide? On the investment earnings sign out of there?
Yes, sir.
That 2.9 in the first quarter of '25.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything funky about that or?
Nothing at all. That's actual.
That's just what it is?
Yep.
No timing funding?
No timing.
As for that?
That's exactly what it is.
Great news, period?
Yes.
Okay.
It's up about 120,000 year-over-year. That's an actual number.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The, this chart represents the current view of the Q1 percentage total revenue by category. Which is on the sales tax coming in at 35%, property tax about 33%. That's relatively close to last year. This is what the adjusted number though. And investment earnings continues to be strong coming in at 12% of revenue, which was $2.9 million right now and $2.7 million in 2024, as you just identified. This next one is my intent to try and adjust those revenue items to kind of give you a little bit of idea. It's not perfect. There's some items that are in there, some items that aren't. But as you can see, with this adjustment, the, the increase goes around $2.2 million down from that $9.8 million that you showed there earlier. And that will adjust this next quarter. The majority of the increase is driven by fees and charges for services, which is also kind of a timing issue. And well, and as we discussed earlier, the investment earnings continues to have a strong positive impact on our revenue, again, at $120,000 to the good. Again, these numbers here are based upon my adjusted numbers, which where I'm estimating revenue around $23.3 million versus last year, $21.5 million, which equated to about $2.2 million. But again, this, this adjustment, I don't really, it's not really 100% apples to apples, and we will see that next quarter.
Bart, can you explain the significant increase in fees and charges for services?
Yes, those are mixed in with, and Dr. Brown might, might be able to give me a little bit, or to, but associated with some property tax, I think that's a mix associated with some of those things going on. It's the timing of it. Do, do you agree with me? It's kind of good timing. So it happened this year. Last year it didn't happen till April.
Got it. Thank you.
So again, that'll, that'll adjust.
Thank you.
Again, I'm estimating those to be about $1.4 million. And again, that's, that's an estimate. Sales tax, $383,000, that's an actual number. Property tax, I said, that's an estimate at $175,000. Investment earnings is an actual number, and we're seeing slight increases, conveyance fees, local government and casino throughout this year. The only decrease was the general revenue, which was down about $23,000 year-over-year. Moving on to sales tax. As we talked about sales tax, we continue to be one of the lower sales tax in the county. No changes so far in our sales tax this year. The only change I saw in sales tax this quarter was, if you look at Franklin County, theirs did go up to 8% versus 7.5%. That is the only change I saw this year. And as you can see, our sales tax continues to do well. It increased $318,000. Of that $318,000, our sales tax was driven up by non-automated, up 6.6% and automotive's up 28.4% same time year-over-year. And our explanations of our expense categories. We've got these four. There are 690 different line items and there are categories of seven different categories. These are just the explanations of what makes up those categories. For Q1, there's no adjustments in the expenses. The 2025 Q1 expenses increase in us made $3.3 million. This increase was driven by capital outlay, contract services and personnel services. This increase really is driven by a timing issue associated with transfers. We did transfers a little bit earlier this year with our investments. Last year, this kind of happened in second quarter and third quarter. So that's why you see such, such a jump there. And I'll explain those here in just a couple of slides. Our, our percentage breakdown of our expenditures, you'll see there, is pretty much relatively flat to what it was last year at the same time. Nothing real, nothing really caught here in the expenditure breakdown. Moving on to our explanations, our first quarter expenses at $21.1 million versus $70.7 million. Again, this is timing. The transfer of capital investments increase in the first quarter year-over-year. However, the overall transfers are anticipated to reduce here in 2025. So this is just a timing issue. And again, this happened earlier this, this quarter and adjusted, or 2024 was later in the other quarters. We continue to invest in workforce centers. Engineering salt norms part of this. Parking lot maintenance, roof repairs and HVAC are all projects we'll be working in 2025. Another call out will be our fringe benefits for our health insurance continues to be a little bit of an impact to us. We continue to work with our partners to analyze our health insurance and understand the increases of our health, of, of these increases, and we'll provide updates when more information becomes available. Our contract services is also a timing issue. Our OIS is extent, OIS extension, and we made that earlier this year than we did last year. So it's just a timing issue. So should that, take that out, we're a pretty flat year, year-over-year. Moving on to the 2026 budgets. The 2026 budget schedule has already been. Moving on to the 2026 budgets, uh, the 2026 budget schedule has already been, uh, released. Level one closed yesterday on the April 28th, and level three will end on August 27th of this year. Budget hearings have all been set, and our departmental meetings are ongoing right now. We'll end departmental meetings somewhere around June of this year. Any questions?
Commissioner Davis, questions, comments?
No, I had a nice being part this morning, and appreciate the update. Basically.
Yes.
Likewise, I met with Bart earlier and answered all my questions. Thanks.
Good part, nice job, keep up the good work. Stay safe, thank you, appreciate you both. Thanks, Mark. All right, so this is time we set aside for public comments. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission this morning, we ask that you step to the podium, state your name and address, and let me your comments to three minutes. Gordon Ray?
Good morning. Good to be able to get out, move around a little bit. When I look at the figures here, I can remember when the figures were in thousands, now they're in millions. And, uh, a lot of that's our tax money, and the people in this room are, have a lot of responsibility to handle that money. And so with that thought, we need higher directions than what I can give, but I can certainly pray that you will have the, the, uh, the information that you need to make the right decisions. So with that thought in mind, I want to go to the Lord in prayer. Lord, guide and direct these men and women and their positions that they have given special guidance and directions in using this money for the best use possible. And we know, Lord, that not everybody agrees on everything that's done, but we pray that you will be at the center of their decisions. And we pray you'll be with each one, guide and direct them as they look for advice and information, give it to them until they can understand. And we pray this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Ray. Morning, Ryan. Heard you were gone.
Uh, that's part of why I'm here, Commissioner Davis. My death has been greatly over, is that right? Morning, for county leadership, um, I'm Brian, I've heard I'm here on behalf of Carnation Solar, uh, you've seen Samantha Meadows here more recently, she's recently hired community advocate, she sent her address, she had scheduling conflicts and was unable to make it. Um, I'm here today just to pass out the annual newsletter, um, make it available, and again, reiterate that if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns from, uh, yourself individually or from any of your constituents, you can reach out to Samantha or myself, uh, and we'd be happy to answer those, respond to them, do whatever else I should do. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Come for the cookies.
Bishop Levinson knows the whole way, y'all.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission this morning? You all for being here today. Legal update, Amy? Come on.
It's my just opinions, we actually have a legal update, so. Um, guys, we're voting, uh, voting power on the undue amendments. There was a late addition last night after 11 o'clock, so obviously I didn't review it last night, um, just the assignment of the trustee, um, same type of amendment, it's just adjusting these in the day to take out the Harken House piece because that's the part they have, seems wants to convey. Uh, and there were questions about the underlying term of the lease, and I just wanted to briefly address those. Uh, looking at the 2013 lease, so there was the base lease where FMC leased to Fairfield County, the 2013 lease where Fairfield County leased back to FMC, and that's the one where the term is listed. Um, it's a 30-year term, so it is due to expire June 15th, 2043, and FMC has an option to renew for an additional 30-year term. Uh, so the lease could go till June 15th, 2073. There is something beyond that date. As far as any type of rents, uh, those were assigned at the communities. Fairfield County leased back to FMC, FMC is paying basically their bond payments directly to trustee, there are no rent payments directly to Fairfield County, it's just FMC paying down their bond. Uh, the only other rent term is under the underlying lease, which was $10, it was under the first lease. So I don't know if there are any questions sold of that, but I just want to kind of lay that out because there.
Commissioner Davis?
No additional questions on that, I appreciate your information on that, I've been curious about those two issues, the duration and the lease rate.
And Commissioner Davis, just so you know, if you look at the 2013 lease, because it's now at CRMS, Dinsmore, we didn't have that initially when Dinsmore sent the amendments, but I did bless those because that was kind of CRMS, just so we had electronic copy. The base rent is described in the, in the lease, not the base lease, 2013 lease, section 2.15, and there are a lot of different subsections, but that's essentially the gist, it's just them paying their, you know, there's like an interest component, there's a principal component, debt service component, and any additional cost the county may have to expend if on the attorneys or whatnot, they would reimburse the county. So if you want to, just so you know where that is.
I appreciate that, Mr. President. Uh, at some point, as our schedule permits, um, I'll ask for an executive session today related to the seller acquisition of property, which may or may not be related to this subject matter, but nonetheless, I'll, we'll be asking for that, um, today.
Good. 2073, I'll be 108 years old, don't expect that I'll still be a commissioner, but.
Never say that.
If so, I'll remember this conversation. And for the record, that's five weeks in a row with an update, thank you very much, Amy. Uh, county administration update, Honnie.
All right, we're going to start off by recognizing our own Rick Zabreck. He was listed as one of the Power 125, look at him there, they got a picture without your arms up. Own the back. So seriously, what, what a great honor for Rick. Um, so that's considered one of the most influential business leaders, uh, the annual ranking of the region's 125 most influential executives, thought leaders and influencers that came out last week. And Rick, like others who made that list, is leading conversation about Central Ohio's future. Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing what other great work you do, Rick.
One of the things I love is that you, you talk about how well positioned Fairfield County is, how did you grow, being right between and role and infill, that's jobs. So it's always nice to, to get us on the menu, so.
Good job, Rick.
Thank you.
Hey, Rick, you played a big part.
Happy to have you, part of the team.
Someday you'll actually move here.
Is that funny when you get in? You can fly the job and then do life.
I'm never going to give up.
He doesn't get to try it, does he?
I'm never going to give up.
Yeah, okay, we don't, it's hard either.
Uh, continuing to recognize April as National County Government, Government Month, we are going to recognize, um, Mental Health Awareness Month and Supervised Visitation Awareness Month, which are taking place in May. So we thought we would spotlight Adam H. and the Fairfield County Visitation Center. Uh, Adam H. also has their annual dinner tonight, um, but they're dedicated to raising awareness about mental health and breaking the stigma that surrounds it. Supervised Visitation Awareness Month does bring attention to the crucial services that provide a safe neutral setting for children to maintain relationships with non-custodial parents. And I think, oh, John still has stepped out, but the, uh, the building that, uh, we house them in that have been renovating, it is getting painted, uh, this week, so it'll have a little bit of a fresh look there. Uh, it's aluminum siding and that paint had seen way better days, so, uh, definitely a nice freshening up there. Evening meeting, May 13th, commissioners meeting will be at 7:00 PM at the Wigwam Events Center in Violet Township. Um, as we started off the meeting mentioning, the transit rebranding ribbon cutting is today, uh, 3:30 to 4:30, really probably going to be more a 3:30 to 4 o'clock timeframe in the JFS parking lot. We're hoping the rain and the storms do hold off, uh, but Corey, in case it doesn't, we might be, um, coming in and hanging in your lobby for the ribbon cutting. So I hope that might be okay, but we will continue to assess that as the day goes on. All are welcome to that, and Commissioner Davis will be playing a pivotal role of bringing the bus around for everyone to see.
Have you practiced that?
Yeah, it's got 14 gears. I don't know anything about riding, but I'm going to do it. They're giving me two hours of training. One minute drive.
Is it recorded?
No, it is not, Dave.
I think I should crash the bus, I mean, let's have a story.
No, 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 we, we, you don't need that.
That would be a story.
Commissioner crashes bus, one minute drive.
Uh, moving on, we do still have issue two yard signs over there, voting is May 6th. Uh, administrative approval approvals, the review packet does contain a list of those. There are 16 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting today, and Amy did mention the resolution on the agenda for amendment to the 2013 base lease, the lease between Fairfield County and FMC. There are two resolutions for economic and workforce development to appoint members to the Area 20 slash 21 Workforce Development Board. One appoints Josh Riddison to replace Stephen Carson effective July 1, 2025, and the other reappoints Katie Terwatsky, is that confirmed?
So part of our roles is for the, uh, administrative bar for Area 20 Workforce Board, there's two mandatory positions that the state selects, but they have to choose, that's noted, JFS representative and representative for, uh, option least for. From here to there.
Perfect, thank you. Engineers Office has five resolutions, one to appropriate from unappropriated, two resolutions to approve the contract with Bud's Inc., and the notice to commence for two bridge replacements, and two resolutions to approve agreements to cooperate with the Director of Transportation for roundabouts at State Route 158 and Coop Path at State Route 204 and Tollgate. Jeremiah, you want to add anything to that?
Uh, just doing the normal business, working with ODOT, but I just, I did want to say something, I forgot to ramper.
The widening?
Um, yes, definitely. So there was a couple of things there that, uh, we found out just a couple of days ago that ODOT has received 86 million, I think, 86 or 89 million dollars for lane additions on Route 33, um, between Hill Valley and 270 both directions. That's a project that, uh, Fairfield County really, uh, jumped in line to support and push to get moved forward, and, uh, and honestly, due to Fairfield County's efforts, this project has been moved forward and served. It was kind of tied with, uh, the interchange that they're looking at at fixed growth, which has a tremendous amount of economic development impacts, all kinds of right away, real estate issues that need to be solved. By getting this pulled out, it's going to happen a lot quicker, it's going to benefit Fairfield County and all of South, Southeastern Ohio. So, um, that's another project that the TID was kind of the hub that, 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 you know, elevated that support and pushed that toward ODOT. Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up too was we, uh, I found out last night that we got a grant for $1.5 million to replace the bridge on Boswell Western Road, uh, just south of Ballmore. So that original, uh, or not Boswell Western, Boswell. So it's the, it's over Walnut Creek, just outside of Ballmore, kind of down in the dip of Forestback Farms, um, that's going to be a brand new bridge here in a few years. So all good news. We also got a $75,000 grant for the line system, and commissioners are graciously helping us with as long as the salt farm, which should have sold in it, um, within a month.
Just in time for summer.
Yep. Be ready to go.
And lastly, regional planning has a resolution for the approval of the final acceptance of the Spring Creek subdivision, section 3-1B public improvements. Anything there, Holly? All right, thank you. All right, Rochelle, counter review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. The Adam, the Adam H. annual dinner is this evening at 5:30 PM at the Crossroads on Fair Avenue. The governor's reception celebrating Ohio's county elected officials is May 1st at 5:00 PM. Fair Hope Celebrates Life is also May 1st, it is at 5:30 PM at the Millard Dent Center. Invitations were received for the FOP Forest Rose Lodge 50 fallen officer memorial service on May 7th at 11:00 AM at the Lancaster Downtown Cathedral. The Fairfield Medical Center Foundation's annual legendary philanthropist award event is May 12th at 4:00 PM in the San Flavie of the Fairfield Medical Center. And the pre-apprentice graduation at the Workforce Center will be May 15th at 11:30 AM. Also received an invitation for the American Legion Post 283's dedication of Corporal David A. Johnson Memorial Highway, that will be May 22nd at 1:00 PM along Refugee Row. The following correspondence was received, a letter from Senator Tim Schaper regarding pending litig- legislation, an email from Marilyn Boye, thank you Commissioner Fix for speaking at Bremen's Chamber Luncheon, and correspondence regarding industrial solar projects. There was also a letter from the Evergreen Real Estate Group regarding Green Oaks of Canal Winchester LLC. That is all I have.
Thank you, Rochelle, that's all for us.
Thank you, Honnie. Uh, updates for elected officials, Jeremiah, you got anything else you want to talk about today?
I think I've taken enough time, so.
Okay. Lisa?
Brandon?
Dante, I will next.
Nikki Drake?
We all said we descend from three different locations from our township all the way to the green. So happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day, cool. Tiffany?
Hey.
Holly? Dr. Brown?
Um, earlier today I was talking to Dan, thanking him and his team for the work that they're doing to help improve, um, some of the technology in the 108 North High. Really particular to me is that he's done a great job, he's really trying to problem solve there, and just wanted to highlight that. I also want to say thank you to the engineer, we're setting up some quarterly meetings relating to, um, DIS features, that's been very productive, and to share it as well with the public safety, we're increasing some features there and really improving that stakeholder engagement. Um, this is a sex annual update year, and I won't be able to attend the link ribbon cutting because I have a meeting with the state, all of our meeting we had earlier. We do have to have the State Department of Taxation approve our statistical analysis. So I'm working on that, and I will put in your review folder next week's information about the sex annual update, as I know that you do get questions about that, and we've updated our fact sheets, and we'll be updating our videos this year. We have, um, received a lot of applications for owner occupancy credit, trying to figure out why we have such new applications, and we're thinking that at closing, it's getting a bit of a lot of new closings. So we hope to reach out to maybe some new title agencies that have new staff, just to make sure that they remind people that they have these options so that they don't have to go back in time and have the owner occupancy credit. We get questions about that, it's a very easy process, uh, once we receive those applications. But enterprise source play in a, within a capital investment assessment, we really do have some things that we can leverage, looking forward to that. Similar thing with enterprise assessment and tax, which is the system that real estate assessment uses, and the treasurer is engaged in that. We have several best practices that are going to be, um, highlighted at the conference coming up for enterprise assessment and tax. We did an in-service with legal aid, and it was one of our best in services of the year, really appreciated the information, we received really good information to be helpful to seniors and those that are conveying, um, property, and it was really nice to hear about more information with the clerk of courts, where they're going to have, um, presence there and presence at municipal court continuing for eviction, so very, very good, um, in-service, wanted to highlight that.
Cool, thank you. Our all-star, Rick Zabreck.
Start by the, we got, uh, with Community Action, we got a $139,000 grant through, uh, Google's Creative Innovation Fund. Um, so when we had that meeting with Google about 4% or a couple of months ago, one of the people, uh, encouraged us to apply for this grant, um, to help, uh, Community Action with their weatherization process, which will help them more efficient energy homes, but also save a lot of money. We did include some money in that for equipment for the workforce center, so our HVAC students can learn how to do some weatherization projects too, because there's, rest of the shortage of community planning, so it's a perfect partnership, but, uh, nice to, best to move.
Thank you for including and supporting Community Action and those efforts.
Thanks, Rick. Hey, Boy?
I just closed the meeting so long. Everything felt good, bud.
Okay, good. Dan? Dan?
Special thanks to a number of folks across the county as we mark upon re-credentially all event badge. So we're doing a training this morning on some of the photo-taking.
I'm going to come down and be a guinea pig for you.
Oh, boy. Corey's IT, Levi George at JFS has been really helpful. So certain special thanks, so we're getting rolling. I had the opportunity last week to visit the new Wellness Center, Child Wellness Center in Galia County. Just as an update, that project continues to make really good progress in shooting for July to have the first children placed there. So the center is ready to go. They've got staff in place. So I think that's a realistic goal to have. Get there, so keep it posted.
Yeah, good. Looking forward to hearing more about that. Nice, Corey. Jeff?
Okay.
Okay. Old Business, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I just want to touch on transit for a minute. We've had some good communications recently with the Uber company. Here term, we'll be interviewing or communicating with a couple of local governments that have enacted some form of relationship with Uber as part of their transit system. And I think here in just a couple of weeks, we're supposed to get a demo from the Uber company to kind of show us the down and dirty of how it works and what their relationships look like and how they might work. What we're thinking about in having those conversations is if we look at our transit plan right now and all the consultants that have given us recommendations as to things that could or should be done, we're looking at 20, 25 years before we get to goal. Goal being that if someone in our county needs to get from point A to point B anytime of day or night, there's a reasonable way, an efficient way at a reasonable price for them to get that trip. Right now, that goal only applies to Hickington. It's the only area in our county where if you need to get from point A to point B, you can do it anytime, day or night. They're close enough to the metro area that all of the transit solutions are available to them. In the lower two-thirds, that's not the case. And I know that when we talk about public transit, we think of people in need of transit. And I am thinking about them. But problems apply to the full scope of the socio-economic strata. If you're in Bremen, and it's 6 o'clock in the morning and you want to go to the airport, you better have planned ahead. You cannot just get on your phone and have a trip to the airport. It could be hours, could be a day, or someone would pick up that trip and you're trying to get to the airport. You know, so I just, I think there are ways that our residents aren't experiencing that new kind of cultural phenomenon as it relates to transit. And can we, should we, will we bring that kind of access to the full county? And can it be done sooner than 20 or 25 years? Myself, I'm not a patient person. I don't usually wait 20 years for a solution. So we'll see how things go.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Love, CEO of Business?
So continue to work on Veterans Hall of Fame. And a special shout out to Brian Ebert. He's agreed and actually moved forward with the legal aspect of filing for a 501(c)(3), getting our legal determination for the Secretary of State, so on and so forth. And he's doing this pro bono, so definitely appreciate him, Brian. Amy Ivan, they're founded the Fairfield County Foundation. It's going to be, we're going to utilize them to, on the nonprofit side till we get our 501(c)(3). And then Justin Messenger, he's the new Director of Veterans Services. He's jumped on board and been very helpful, helping us create a website to come up with the appropriate name, so on and so forth. And so we have, now I'll be the president by default because I couldn't get anybody else to take it. And Mike Reich should be the vice president. And Jim Bonson says he wasn't there. He is now the president and secretary. And just a lot of good things happening, and it's coming together much quicker than I ever anticipated because we'd like to, we'd like to start this November around Veterans Day to actually have something put together for all of us. So thank you.
So my only old business is I did get to go down to the Village of Bremen last week for a Chamber of Commerce lunch. And it's always good to go out and talk about all the great things that are going on in Fairfield County and to then also hear feedback on that and get good questions. So appreciate that opportunity and look forward to being around the county, doing that kind of work in the future. I have no new business. Commissioner Love, see, do you have any business? Commissioner Davis?
No, no new business. I'm looking really forward to the, I have not seen the newly designed transit bus yet. I was given multiple opportunities to do that, just haven't, haven't got there yet. So I'll see it for the first time this afternoon. I'm looking forward to that. And I hope that folks can enjoy that moment of celebration and kind of begin the process of rethinking about transit in our community in a way that isn't negative, isn't about helping poor people. It's much, much bigger than that. I'm excited. Hope the weather holds out a little bit, but if we get rain down, we get rain down. It's just rain.
All right, we're ready to go into our voting pattern. If you all would rise, if you're able, join us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Center of life, and active faith of America. In the true republic where the truth stands, one foundation, other ground, if we are visible, we will never see any doubt.
Thank you. Rochelle, any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Looking for a motion on the approval of the minutes of the April 22nd meeting. So, second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Minutes passed three zero from the Commissioners Resolution 2025-4.29.a. A resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a First Amendment to base lease dated as June 1, 2013, and a First Amendment to lease dated as June 1, 2013, both between the county of Fairfield, Ohio and Fairfield Medical Center in connection with the release of certain property from such base lease and lease, and authorizing other documents in connection therewith.
Move.
Second. So, bill of motion is second. Amy, you mentioned that last night late, there were some emails going back and forth on this. Is this thing that we're voting on today exactly as it needs to be?
Rochelle, did you upload the assignment?
It has not been. The documents that we received around 11:30 last night have not been uploaded yet. But I would upload them before I finalize the vote.
And I have no issue with those being uploaded. I reviewed those at the beginning of the meeting. So yeah, there was like a scripter's error on one of the amendments, and that's been taken.
That has been corrected.
Okay. So I think that's good, and that Rochelle can upload the remaining assignment to the trustee. Because again, it's just, it's just adjusting the. But I, I approve those as a form. I can approve the other as a form. I don't know if you want to ultimately put it in CRMS. I could just do that after the fact, but you would find it.
Okay.
Mr. President, yeah. So this is convoluted and complicated, but what we're going here is because the hospital runs their debt through the county for tax-exempt status, all hospital property is basically collateralizing the debt that they run through the county. And that resulted in significant complications in terms of the hospital being able to work a deal out with the Harkam House for their, their future home. And at some point during those discussions, the Harkam House asked we, the county, to participate in the negotiations between Fairfield Medical Center and the Harkam House for that future home. A lot of things went right in those discussions, including our state legislators, Ray, Miller, Schaefer, putting their shoulder to the state budget, which resulted in several hundred thousand dollars coming to the Harkam House to close the deal with FMC. But the deal couldn't be closed because even this small parcel was part of the collateralized tracks under a undue debt or tax-exempt status. And so unwinding that to be able to make this happen has been a longer process than all of us would have liked. This is the exciting conclusion. Once we pass this, then that property will be free from collateralization. And Harkam and FMC can close their deal, and Harkam can go on to their, their new digs. So I'm really in favor of this and appreciative to FMC and Harkam House leadership, our state legislators, our bond council. A tremendous number of people had to be involved in this. And so I appreciate everybody's work in getting us to this moment. And I'm really excited for the Harkam House and the work they do and their ability now to do it better.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. And the Fairfield County Auditor Finance Division. Resolution 2025-4.29.b. A resolution authorizing fund-to-fund transfer, Auditor Fund 1080.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
It's the normal process of unplanned funds being transferred to the.
Further discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Board of Elections, Resolution 2025-4.29.c. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated major expenditure object category for Board of Elections Fund 2884 SOS 2025 Primary Election Funding.
Move.
Second. Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2025-4.29.d. Resolution approving the ODJ FS representative to the Area 20/21 Workforce Development Board.
Second.
Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2025-4.29.f. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, County Engineer 2024 Motive Vehicle for Travel Reversion.
All right.
Second. Discussion? When I heard the name of the company was BUDS Inc., I wasn't thinking contractor. I was thinking something else.
It has a. It's a beating. I'll tell you what it is. It's nothing bad. It's, it's.
Any further?
Not marijuana.
They're a minority company. The daughter's name is Brandy. It's Brandy under Dad's supervision.
That's actually a really cool thing.
They do good work. He's difficult. They do good work, and they give us good prices, so.
And I asked. Any further questions? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For the Fairfield County Facilities. Resolution 2025-4.29.k. A resolution authorizing approval of the lease agreement with Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency for office space at the Two-Sing Road Government Services Center.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
So this is the continuation of a lease that we have with Community Action for them to be able to provide services up in the northwest part of the county. And it's a small area that they're using in the Two-Sing Road building, about 375 square feet. So it equates to about 437 bucks a month.
Just curious, I happened to be driving by the center the other day, like I do on my way to work.
Take it in the long way.
Yeah, sometimes we commissioners do that. What other services are?
Health department.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
They're operating their WIC and immunizations programs up there.
Community Action is very excited about using that space there through the action board, so gives us a presence there.
Backing, Commissioner Davis took his medication today. Any further discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2025-4.29.l. A resolution approving memo expense memo receipt for the cost of birth certificates paid to Fairfield County Health Departments as a memo expenditure for Fund 2072 Public Children's Services.
For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I approve Resolution 11.
Second.
Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Law Library, Resolution 2025-4.29.n. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated funds for the Fairfield County Law Library Resources Board, Fund 2761.
So move.
Second. Discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. And Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2025-4.29.o. A resolution to approve final acceptance of the Spring Creek subdivision, Section 3.1b Public Improvements.
Move.
Second. Discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of Bills, Resolution 2025-4.29.p. A resolution authorizing the approval of payments of inforces for departments that need board of commissioners approval.
Move.
Second. Discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovec? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for May 6th at 9:00 AM.
Looking for a motion on executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the potential for the seller acquisition of real property interests. In that session, I'd like to have the Commissioners, County Administrator, Representative for Facilities, Representative from Prosecutor's Office, and.
And the Deputy County Administrator?
Yeah, sure.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovec?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
We going into the second.
We're in executive session. We don't anticipate any business being conducted after the conclusion of that session, so we will come back here to adjourn. Thank you all for being here today. Hope you have a great afternoon.